This evening's meeting with the enroll, bring her meeting to order with the call to order, Mrs. Gray with the roll call. Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Melcher?
Here.
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Yager?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mrs. Heim?
Here.
Okay, for revision of the agenda, I have a couple of requests this evening that I would like to add. Number one is request permission to add the following recommendation to consent agenda C seven, which is new certified employees, Mr. Brian O'Neil, technology educator Crestview Middle School. And second is request the addition of consent agenda item G four, certified employee resignation, Matthew Palmer, sixth grade language arts, Riverview Middle School, and renumbering the remaining consent agendas. Do we have a motion for that?
Make a motion to accept revisions to the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Uh, I saw Kevin. We'll have Kevin do it. Gary?
He's bigger than me.
Yeah, that's true. That's true, Gary. Uh, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor signify. Well, we got a vote, don't we here? Okay, we'll do that. So why don't you go ahead and vote for that then, please? Thank you. Okay, the motion passes seven zero. On to B one, oath of office. This evening, we have Mr. Joe Wiley, who is here tonight to conduct the oath of office. I believe that we have one because Gary and Matt were at the courthouse and did theirs. And so Carrie, if you would come forward with Mr. Wiley, we'll move forward from here then.
All right. Would you rate, put your left hand on the label and raise your right hand. Do you, Carrie Heim, as an elected member of the Board of School Trustees of the Huntington County Community School Corporation solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Indiana, the laws of the United States and the State of Indiana, and the Code of Ethics established by the Indiana School Board Association. Do you also affirm that you will faithfully execute the duties of your office as a member of the governing body of the Huntington County Community School Corporation? So help you God.
I do.
You said I do or I will, or what?
Congratulations, Carrie.
That's a fun job, Joe.
Should've known better.
Thanks, Joe. Congratulations, Carrie. We're thrilled that you're part of us and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we are at C one, which is the school board reorganization. And so at this point in time, I would take nominations for president of our school board. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate the same three individuals for president, vice president, and secretary that served in these positions in 2022. Matt Roth is president, Kevin Yager is vice president, Gary McClellan is secretary.
Second. Um, okay.
Riley wasn't in there, so that's why it's a second.
Okay, it's a second. Do we have any other nominations, or can we close the nominations at this point in time? Joe, am I doing this right, since we're doing all three?
To move to close the nominations.
Yeah, I just need a motion then to move to close the nominations.
Make a motion to close the nominations for the three offices.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Discussion for closing the nominations. Cindy, I probably got you so confused right now.
Good.
Because we got two motions on the floor. Okay, so all in favor of closing nominations? I guess we need to vote on that. Is that right, Joe? Am I doing this right?
You can do a verbal.
Can I do a verbal?
Yes.
Can Cindy do a verbal on what she's got set up?
I'm working on that.
Okay.
Change of plans.
You think where we may find this typing?
Yeah.
Or she's got.
Right.
Pre-separate.
We're not in a rush. Michigan and Ohio State both lost, so nobody cares about Georgia and TCU.
Wow.
You could be here all night.
So Cindy, are you planning on taking a regular vote?
I'm trying to, and it's not letting me update it for that. So if we could do a verbal vote, I think that's gonna be.
So let's do a verbal vote for closing the nominations, and then we can record that then for the minutes, okay? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And so now we have a motion on the floor. Tim, would you want to restate your motion just one more time so everybody's clear?
Sure. I make motion to nominate the same three individuals that served as vice president, president, and secretary in 2022.
Okay, and we had a second by Ryan Wall. Any further discussion? Okay, Cindy, are we ready for this? Okay, vote then. Sorry.
You're fine. And that was Mr. Allen's motion, and.
Mr. Wall's second. Are you ready to vote? Okay, we're ready to vote. Okay, motion carries seven zero. Congratulations, Mr. Roth.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate maintaining these positions. And now we'll move on to E ten, appointment of treasurer.
Make a motion that we appoint Det Eckert to serve as our treasurer for 2023.
Is there a second?
Check it.
Any questions or discussion?
She didn't run.
She showed up tonight. That's always a good sign.
All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to appoint Det Eckert as treasurer. Motion passes seven zero. We'll now go to item E eleven, board members compensation.
In the past, we have received $2,000 annually, plus a $62 per meeting stipend for special and executive sessions. However, the state of Indiana allows us to get $112 on top of our salary for regular meetings. And I am not in favor of the full amount of that, but I would, I would propose that we get $62 for all meetings, both normal meetings and special meetings, on top of our $2,000 salary. I have trouble as we're looking at the long-term finances of the corporation taking as much as we can take.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
I will.
Any questions, comments, discussion? I would note, um, school boards have the option, most of them, of health insurance benefits too. And boards prior to this one chose to terminate having health insurance benefits available to board members. So that's not part of our compensation right now. So, yeah. Any other comments, questions? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion regarding board compensation for 2023. All right, that motion passes seven zero. We'll now go to E twelve, appointment of legislative liaison.
I'll make a motion that we keep Ryan Wall as the legislative liaison for 2023.
Is there a second?
Check it.
Any discussion before we vote?
Honored to serve in that position again. I just wanted to let you guys know that unfortunately I'll be out of town when we ha- have the state, we got, the ISBA has their stay house day. So I won't be able to attend that, but I will gladly send anybody information about it if they can't attend on that day. Other than that, I don't mind continuing to do that.
I thought you did a really nice job and really made effort to attend a lot of state functions in that capacity. So I, I know, I appreciated what you did last year in keeping us in the loop on things that, that we might not have known about since you were down there. Hearing no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to reappoint Mr. Wall as the legislative liaison. All right, that motion passes seven to zero. Now go to E thirteen, appointment of bid opening committee. And I believe the recommendation is that the superintendent, the corporation treasurer, serve. Is that correct?
Correct. Superintendent or his or her designee, and then the corporation treasurer.
Okay. So would anyone like to make a motion regarding those vacancies for this year?
I'll make a motion for that recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to appointment of bid opening committee. All right, motion passes seven zero. We'll now go to E fourteen, common wage committee. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding appointments to that committee?
I'll make a motion that we appoint the superintendent to the common wage committee.
Or his designee.
Or his, or his designee, yes.
All right, any other? I'm sorry, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion before we vote? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to appointment of common wage committee. That motion passes seven to zero. We'll now go to D one, items from visitors, public comment. All right, so we didn't have anyone sign the registry to address the board, but now would be the opportunity for anyone to make public comment. So if anyone would like to make public comment specifically on matters before the board, now is your opportunity to come forward. And no one having come forward, we'll now go to E one, core values discussion.
Yes, this evening, as we have done the past few school board meetings, we have several students and a couple of our employees that we want to recognize this evening. Cindy is going to start this process for us tonight. Just a reminder to you as a board and to those who are, might possibly be watching online, this is an opportunity for us to recognize individuals within our district who are doing an outstanding job in several different categories that we have chosen. As you can see behind us, and Mr. Brinberry will introduce this to each group that comes in here this evening, is that we have now created a core values board where students and staff members before in the past that we have recognized, we have put their picture up here on the board. Also, students receive a certificate, a picture coming back their way, I believe, also, once this evening is done. It's a way for us as a school board to say thank you and recognize excellence in our district that is going on each and every day. So today, Mr. Brinberry will be reading the names for us this evening, and a couple of you are going to be passing out certificates. And so he'll go through what we need to go through when the students arrive. So, Mr. Brinberry, we'll turn it over to you.
Cindy, are you, are we ready for our first?
Come on in here.
Just wait for the parents to get.
Yeah.
Yes, we have Audrey for you.
How are you?
Good.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, very exciting.
Yes.
I sent you those.
So, go ahead, Mr. Riley.
Okay. Well, I want to remind our families that are here and our students and our community that we're going to recognize several different kids tonight. It is a wonderful group of kids. There are some unbelievable accomplishments. Our first student tonight, now when we get done, finished with everything, we will take a picture with our board member and Mr. Trout here tonight, Mr. Melcher and you. So we'll be patient at the end. We'll get pictures as well. Our first one is Audrey Bowman. Audrey was named as the winner of the University of St. Francis Annual Pay It Forward Scholarship. This scholarship encompasses all tuition and fees for four years, value of $140,000. Audrey has been an inspiration in her goal to give back to our community, serving as the president of the Riley Dance Marathon at Huntington North, as well as helping start a support group for fellow students who have lost a parent. Audrey is being recognized for displaying the core value of shared leadership. Congratulations very much. Impressive young lady.
Turn around here. You get your picture taken.
Thank you, Audrey. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Melcher, Mr. Trout, I appreciate that. Audrey, what an impressive young lady. Your second part, where you have established this group for students who have lost a parent, I've been doing this 29 years. That's the most impressive thing that I've read aloud at a board meeting or anything. So you are be commended as a special, special leader in our district.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You don't have to stay.
Yeah, we, the, to the families that when you are finished, unless you're getting another award later, we certainly wouldn't expect you to stay through the end of this. But you're welcome to, but not, not necessary. Second, good to go?
Here we go.
Our second honoree tonight, if you want to come on up, Jana?
Come on up.
Is Jana Toys. Jana was named as the winner of this year's Lilly Endowment Community Scholarship through the Community Foundation of Huntington County. Lilly scholars are known for their community involvement, academic achievement, character, and leadership. The scholarship provides for full tuition and fees, as well as a $900 stipend for books. Jana is being recognized tonight for display of core value of high expectations, high achievement, and high accountability. That is one of the highest scholarships Indiana gives. Congratulations. For our community.
Mom, you can come on up.
Yeah, we, we got plenty of time. You want to take pictures as well?
Thank you.
So where are you going to school?
I'm going to Taylor University.
There are tremendous gratitude. There are tremendous gratitude to Taylor University. There you go. Congratulations. Yep. Congratulations, Mom and Dad.
Thank you.
Tremendous honor. For our board, board member, I want to thank Gary McClellan and Mr. Trout for the picture with them. You'll see different people up here throughout the night, but want to make sure different, that you recognize of who's standing in front of you.
We have the first two students here in this next group.
So you have Andrew and Takara?
They're not here.
I'm sorry?
The other three are not here.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll at least discuss them and then we'll move on. Is, are the families here, Cindy?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Our third group to honor tonight is another wonderful and outstanding achievement, the PFW Three Rivers Honor Band. Five Huntington North students were recently named to the PFW Three Rivers Honor Band. These students are being recognized for displaying the core value of high expectations, high achievement, and accountability. Two of the five students are here tonight, and we will recognize all five, but I appreciate those in attendance. Students named to the honor band are Andrew Kreider, if you want to come on up, see Mr. Trout, and board member McClellan, thank you. And Takara Heathco, is that, is that correct?
Congratulations to you.
Very good. And Takara is percussion, I believe Andrew is trombone, correct?
Yeah.
And I am going to mention the other three wonderful students, Lucas Lehman in trumpet, Cadence Reed in flute, and Alicia Tome in clarinet. So a big congratulations to those five, and I appreciate you two being here tonight. Thank you. And as a reminder, some of our kids are being recognized a couple of different times tonight. So if you have multiple honors, just hang with us and, and your family as we get to those. What a tremendous group of young people attending board meetings. This is not the norm in a lot of districts, so it's nice to see our kids here at board meetings receiving honors. As we wait for our IMEA All-State Honor Concert Band honorees. Cindy, are we good with everybody here?
Almost.
Okay.
Chuck, you might, you might introduce some people who are here in the room, because they may not have heard it when they're in the hallway.
Yeah, and also for this group, if you see the pictures behind, on, on the wall behind our board, when we're finished today, you'll get a picture in the mail to your family. We also put one up here for our wall of fame, if you will. One of the really nice things Mr. Trout has brought to our district is honoring students at board meetings versus just mentioning their names. And so we put your own little wall of fame, if you will. And Mr. Trout will be in the picture tonight. Board member Gary McClellan will be there as well. But you'll see different board members at different times. So I appreciate the process. So we take time to honor kids tonight. The next group is the IMEA All-State Honor Concert Band. Four Huntington North students were recently named to this All-State Honor Concert Band. These students being recognized for displaying the core value of high expectations, high achievement, and accountability. Students' names in the honor band are Takara Heathco, percussion. If you come back up, congratulations. Lucas Lehman, trumpet. Micah Pence, alto sax.
Congratulations to you.
And Brianna Thomas, piccolo and flute. Congratulations to these wonderful, talented students. It's pretty obvious we have a wonderfully proud music program at Huntington County Community Schools. It's nice to see these kids honored tonight.
Parents, if you want to come, does it, does a parent want a picture? If you can come forward if you want, or can you, you're good?
And again, you're not, certainly not required to stay through the rest of it, but if you are being honored again, hang with us.
Unless you're in econ class and you're here to get extra credit, then you have to stay.
It's so nice to see so many kids here. I know that they're receiving things, but seeing the kids and the families at the board meeting is certainly a nice change from past, and it's nice to see the kids in here. We'll be repeating ourselves a little bit, but I want the families and kids to, to know, number one, Mr. Allen, our board member, and Mr. Trout will be taking a picture with you when you're finished tonight. Your picture will be on our Hall of Fame behind us, honoring our students and their achievements throughout the year. It will also be mailed to each of you to honor you with recognition with a letter as well for while you're here. So I appreciate you being in attendance. Mrs. Cindy, are we good?
No.
Okay, thank you. The last group of our talented young people, IJEA, for our band and music kids, All-State Jazz Ensemble. Huntington North student Lucas Lehman was recently named to the IJEA All-State Jazz Ensemble for trumpet. Is Lucas here?
Nope.
Okay. Cindy? Well, in honor of Lucas being, being recognized, I guess I would say for the board, that's another tremendous honor that should not go unnoticed in our district. We have such talented young people, and the ability to take this time tonight is a wonderful thing. Cindy, the next group with Indiana Association of School Principals? Very good. The next wonderful group in the Association of School Principals, Rising Stars of Indiana Class of 2024. The Rising Stars Program is designed to recognize juniors who display academic achievement with the goal of providing them more exposure for scholarship opportunities. Each high school in the state is allowed to nominate up to four juniors for this recognition. These students are being recognized for displaying core values of high expectations, high achievement, and accountability. Huntington North's four honorees for this wonderful program, Rising Stars Program, are Johanna Bragg. Come on forward.
Congratulations.
Gracie Fields.
Congratulations.
Ella Hall.
Congratulations.
And Kayden Vaught.
Kayden is not with us.
And Kayden's not with us, but I appreciate all of you being in attendance for your picture with Mr. Allen and Mr. Trout. Congratulations to this group. And parents, thank you for having them here tonight. That's a wonderful honor.
Mom and Dad, you want a picture?
Congratulations. Wonderful group. And again, we would not expect you to stay for the remainder of that if you, unless you choose to. But thank you for being here very much. Quite a group. I believe, Mrs. Gray, we're ready for a couple of our employees. If they could come on forward up towards the front.
Yep.
Mr. Allen, Mr. Trout will be taking a picture with you and congratulating you. I'm going to read a little bit about what you've done. For our board and community's purpose, this is a tremendous opportunity to say thanks and to be fortunate of the people who work for this school district. I'll read you a little bit about this. Julie Glassburn and Beth Lush, Julie and Beth are being celebrated tonight for their outstanding work of identifying and helping a student in distress during a bus route last month. While running their bus route, a student was not coming to the bus despite two stops at the house. Julie was able to see the, see the student inside, and upon approaching the house, realized the student needed medical help immediately. Julie quickly called 911 to get medical help and then stayed at the home until they arrived. Beth alerted the transportation office before carrying on with the rest of the route. We are truly fortunate to have such skilled and caring individuals working in our transportation department. These two ladies are an incredible example of that. Julie and Beth are being recognized for displaying the core values, evidence-based decisions, and what a wonderful act of kindness and caring. Thank you very much. If you'd like to come on up, we recognize you. We're going to keep you around for a picture here.
Thank you.
Thank you. You didn't notice what we're doing before you came?
No.
What?
They're being fired.
That is fair.
Well, if we could have a picture of them.
Thank you, thank you so much. The boy we helped is named Jordan, and he's just the nicest kid. He's got the greatest sense of humor.
Wonderful, wonderful act of caring, thank you so much. I believe, Board, we have one more wonderful young person to recognize tonight. And Matthew, if you could make your way in. Very good, Matthew, make your way up there, your family's here as well. Very good. Our last young person to celebrate tonight, and for your family and for them, we will be taking a picture afterwards, Matthew, and you'll be on the Wall of Fame behind you, and we will also mail you one with the acknowledgement of that to your home. But Matthew Martin Jr. won the individual boys bowling sectional championship, edging out the second place finisher by one pin, 204 to 203. Matthew is being recognized for displaying core values, high expectations, high achievement, accountability, and outstanding bowling. Congratulations, come on up. Congratulations, Matthew, and thanks for coming tonight, thank you, family. Thank you, Todd. Anybody on the Board can beat that score, 204, any bowlers on the group?
Maybe with three games.
Well, thank you, Mr. Trout, and that concludes our core values for tonight. What a wonderful group for young people and Board. It's nice to take time at a board meeting to celebrate those kids tonight and our employees.
You know, you think about those two ladies in the bus, and we take that for granted sometimes. But each individual employee and what they mean to our kids and what they do is that those two fine individuals in our transportation department deserve so much. I'll never forget those calls that morning, and to do that on their own just is a testament to their love that they have for those kids. And so we are truly blessed in this corporation to have adult after adult after adult with that attitude. But these kids, doing what they're doing and working as hard as they're doing, I commend you for a Board taking a few minutes out of a board meeting to do this because it matters. It truly matters for these kids, so thank you for this, Mr. Ross.
Thank you. Well, thank you for those certificates and presentations. I think it definitely has been noticed that you're recognizing employees and students, and so much appreciated. Now we'll move to F1 Synchronous E-Learning Plan.
Okay, today we have some individuals from our staff to come up speaking about some outstanding staff. The four people that we have here today, we wanted to update you as a Board on what's our plan, synchronous e-learning plan going forward. So at the end, I'll remind the public of when we're going to use these days again, but we wanted to show you as a Board and show our community the work that's being done in this area. So Lynn, are we starting with you? Yep?
Hey, good evening, I'm Lynn Brown, Huntington North's Assistant Principal, Professional Development Coordinator, and blessed to work with all those kids you just got to award, like, it's the best job ever. I'm going to take a few minutes and talk about our past and how we got here, and then I'm also going to talk about the secondary plan. Then my colleagues Kathy Hall, Marissa Tinkle will be talking about the elementary plan, followed up by the middle school PD Coordinator, Elizabeth Kitchen. She'll talk about the district plan and the pieces we put in place to support our community as we go through. We are very, very blessed because this Board has supported this cause for a very long time, or we wouldn't be here right now. Dr. Schaefer and the Board that was present during his term allowed us to go one-to-one and to get Canvas, which allowed us to then, under Mr. Harris, do e-learning, which was an amazing blessing. We thought it was just so we wouldn't have to do so many days in June. But when March 2020 came and many school systems fell apart, under Mr. Daughtry, we were well ahead of the curve, and people from all over the nation were calling me and saying, what are you doing and how are you doing that? And that was a huge blessing, followed by the next year where we kind of thought everything would snap back to normal, and we were far from that. And we were able to very quickly put together a virtual plan for students who didn't step into the school all year, but were able to learn from home, as well as support the countless number of people that had COVID and were out over and over again for a substantial amount of time without missing a beat and be able to support our kids, which is absolutely amazing. And now, under Mr. Trout's tenure, the state has changed the rules of the game just one more time. And so we are very, very blessed because we're again being called by people all around the state saying, what are you doing? And sometimes we tell them, and sometimes we're like, we don't know, what are you doing, just to see what their answer will be. So in the past, we've always been ahead of the curve. I believe we are one more time because of the foresight and the flexibility and the support the school board has given us. So right now, as we stand here in the second semester, we have one more day in which if Mr. Trout and Mrs. Fields feels it's not safe for us to come to school, we will have an old-fashioned makeup day, which will be May 25th. If we use that day, we'll have three days that are asynchronous or good old-fashioned. I'm starting to call them good old-fashioned e-learning days just because that entertains me and makes me laugh a little bit. We have three e-learning days the way we've done up until this point. If we use all four of those days, then we go to synchronous learning, which means we'll have live instruction through WebEx with our students being taught by our teachers through the day. So I'm going to share with you the secondary plan really quickly, and then my peers will talk about elementary. So the secondary plan, if, thank you, Cindy, you are so good, you're always like, bam, you're faster than I am.
She's wonderful.
She is amazing. What you see before you is a template of a learning plan or a lesson plan. The classes for secondary will be 22 minutes long, except for the last one, which will be 23 minutes to allow us to fulfill our duties with the state. And this is a template, obviously, for example, at the high school, one size does not fit all, welding class, culinary class, AP physics, AP Spanish, like, there's a lot of things. But this is a template we gave to teachers to kind of help them think about what it could look like. We're going to ask them to use their professional judgment, because the fun thing about these days is we rarely know when they're going to come until they, poof, here they are, right? And so we're going to ask teachers to look at where they are in a unit of study and think about what's appropriate for that day with those students, and then use their best judgment to work with them for a very short 22-minute lesson. This plan has been given to the teachers already and worked through and also gone through HCTA, so we have consensus with this plan. Then let me talk to you just a moment about what we've done for student expectations and teacher training pieces. For student expectations, we've created a list of what we would ask our kids to do and what we would ask our parents to do at the secondary level. We're best blessed at the secondary level because we don't have the littles that someone has to sit next to them and show them where to point and where to click. So we've given the parents the schedule, so everyone knows where we are and when we are. You'll notice 22 minutes with five minutes in between, so we can reset, WebExs and teachers can reset, and maybe someone might have to go to the potty. And then, I thought someone would laugh at that. And then at lunchtime, thank you for laughing, if I ask enough, you will. And then we have an hour lunch period. It's just slightly off of the elementary lunch periods because seven doesn't divide easily into our plans. We made a little adjustment there. Mostly what the students need to do is do their level best to log on to each one of the seven WebEx meetings and participate with the teacher in whatever is being done in the instruction. If for whatever reason that student is not able to participate live for that class period, they were asking them to as quickly as possible connect with their teacher through email and let them know what's going on, so then the teacher can give them the assignment and support them the same way we would any other day. If I ask everyone in the room to raise their hand that's really tried to be in a virtual meeting and it has been a fail, I'm thinking everyone in the room would raise their hand at some point, right? So we're giving a little grace and mercy to kids. If they're attempting and the bandwidth in their house just isn't supporting them, here's your backup plan to just as soon as you can. And most of our kids, at least on their phone, would be able to email a teacher and say, this is what I'm attempting to do, help me out. So that's our schedule, and that's really what we're asking from our students. For the teachers, we trained them all in Crestview, Riverview, and the high school in December. We did small group trainings during their prep periods and one-on-one trainings when we needed to. We've also created a module in Canvas that has all of the pieces in it, so that if this happens on a day in February for the first time, and they're like, what did Lynn tell me? They have a one-stop place to go and find all of that information. And since it's on the internet, they don't have to think, did I leave it on my desk, where is that? The teachers were amazing when I worked with them. They were super flexible, they were all about problem solving, they were all about how do we serve our kids. They were very much aware that some of our students will struggle more than others just with being able to be able in the conference, and they were already thinking about, what do I do? Who do I help? How can I support them? We went through the plan, and then we went through how does WebEx actually work? And as we went through the how does WebEx actually work, we talked a little about protocols and procedures and best practice in any virtual conference, right? What do you have behind you, what's going on in the environment around you so dogs aren't barking, and those kinds of things. Then we also asked them to talk to our students about those same things, because our kids are very used to FaceTiming, which is super informal and a different thing than being with your class on a camera. So we talked to our teachers about that, and then we asked them to have that same conversation with their students. And then we practiced together one day. We had everybody do it on the same day, it was a great deal of fun. We tested the system at Huntington North for all it was worth. And I'm glad to report to you that we had 99% success in our classes. We had one teacher who just forgot to turn something on, and we got that fixed, so I think that's pretty good. We had 92% success with our students, and we've gotten most of those bugs worked out on their computers or what happened. So that was our first trial run. We did it live in class so that we could get support for them immediately, and we had huge success. We'll do another trial again soon, just because we want to make sure it's fresh in everybody's mind as we go along. So far, we have had, we've only had positive feedback from our teachers. They have really taken on yet another change. If you notice, it feels like to me every two years, we're like, hey, friends, you've done a really great job. Now can we ask you to do something else? But because of all the work that everyone has done up to this point, this seems like a much smaller hurdle to jump than most of our friends and neighbors around the state, and I'm super proud of our teachers and the support we've had. At this point, are there any secondary plan questions that anyone has that I can answer? She just took my picture.
Wonderful job.
My mother will be glad. All right, thank you. I'm going to introduce Marissa Tinkle, and she is Elementary PD Coordinator. She's going to talk about the elementary plan.
Thank you, Lynn.
So the PD team created a draft of the plan that will be pulled up here in a second, and we shared it with our elementary teaching staff and administrators, allowing them to give feedback. And what you see here is the updated plan based on that feedback and ultimately what's best for our Huntington County students. Like secondary, you can see that the elementary synchronous day begins at 10 o'clock, in which all students will access their homeroom teacher's WebEx session. The morning session for elementary concludes at 11:30 for lunch. It resumes for another hour in the afternoon from 12:30 to 1:30 for a total of two and a half hours. This differs from the ending time of the secondary since the elementary requirement is only two and a half hours as opposed to the three hours that secondary is required. Within the live instruction, teachers are given much freedom to choose the activities that coincide with their in-person activities. You can see that there's a list of subjects as well as timeframes and suggested components that may be included in that time. While instruction is live in WebEx, it may include work time, which students work independently on tasks, either on paper or in other apps. So knowing that our elementary students will be with us an hour and a half, it looks as though a teacher is going to have to talk at our students for an hour and a half, and that's really not the case. They will be teaching, and there'll also be work time during that hour and a half, and then again in the hour in the afternoon. Students will also participate in a 15-minute music, art, or PE class with their impact teacher at some point during the live instruction portion. Before and after the live instruction, teachers will have additional office hours from 8 o'clock to 10 o'clock and 1:30 to 4 o'clock in the afternoon that they can either use for prep time or communication with students and parents. Our resource and intervention teachers will work with students as needed throughout the synchronous day, as well as offer services to complete work upon return to in-person learning. And to be fully prepared, the elementary PD team is encouraging teachers to use the office hours in the coming asynchronous e-learning days to prepare an emergency e-learning module in case an illness, absence, or tech issue would arise. And in this case, the teacher or the tech department could upload that emergency module, and students would complete that as an e-learning module that they've done in the past. Kathy Hall is now going to share the elementary training and expectations.
Thank you, well done.
Almost tall enough for this microphone. The two weeks prior to Christmas break, Marissa and I met with every elementary teacher team during their impact to train them on the use of WebEx. We showed them how to access their personal rooms and how to allow students to come into their personal rooms and how to use all the features of the WebEx program. We walked them through the WebEx Frequently Asked Question Guide, which is a pictorial step-by-step that we created on all the features of WebEx. Teachers have digital access to this, and in the training, we also gave them a hard copy so that they could go back on their own and have step-by-step for each piece, each feature of the WebEx to practice more. Teachers have, we have encouraged the teachers to use WebEx in their classroom to do something simple to help them and their students get a feel for what synchronous learning looks like, feels like, and get accustomed to using all the features in a classroom setting. And in the very near future, we will have building-wide practice sessions for the teachers and the students. These sessions will deepen the understanding of procedures that students need to follow and the expectations that we have for them and the teachers as well. We've stepped forth some expectations for our teachers, a quick overview of some of those expectations, and it's on the plan on the presentation on our elementary slide, if you want to look at the whole list. But some of them are what to do and who to contact if a teacher's ill, what to do, who to contact if a teacher is having technical difficulties, how to handle the, excuse me, student issues with technology, and to be responsive to their students and deliver rigorous instruction. Like I said, the full list of the expectations are on the links in our presentation on the elementary slide. And in order to have a successful synchronous learning experience, we've also laid out some expectations for our students and their parents. A few of those are, enter your sessions on time, remain engaged and active in the virtual lesson for the entire class period, be aware of the camera view behind you, what to do and who to contact if you're having technical difficulties. And a couple of expectations we have for parents are contact the school office and leave an attendance message if a student cannot attend due to illness, just like a regular in-the-building day, and assist students as appropriate with entering each WebEx session. That's pertinent, especially for our primary students who will need a little more help accessing each session. We've also provided parents with a simple flow chart, and that's also, there you go, on our screen, with a simple flow chart of what to do if they experience technical difficulties. All of these materials are also done in Spanish for our Spanish-speaking clientele. Any questions about anything Marissa and I have shared on the elementary plan at all? No? Okay. I will relinquish the microphone to...
I will relinquish the microphone to Elizabeth Kitchen then.
I'm the tall one on the team. All right, so, as a district, we have been very blessed that we have never had to have one of those moments where we panicked, where we've said, "Oh, my goodness, what are we going to do? What are we going to do?" We've had moments where we're like, "All right, what are we going to do?", but we've always had time to get it figured out and it's been great that we've always said, "Okay, this is what we've done in the past, let's tweak it and just make it a little bit better." You heard Lynn say the two words, "grace and mercy." When Mr. Trout came and talked to the administrative team and we were there, he talked about, "We're going to approach this with a lot of grace and mercy." Grace is when you're given something that you don't deserve and mercy is that you're not held accountable for that, that you just got thrown, right? This whole plan is grace and mercy. And we have spoke this over and over and over to our teachers. We have spoke and we said, "You know what? Mr. Trout's even said to us, 'We're going to be given grace and mercy. We're going to give you grace and mercy. We're going to give our kids grace and mercy, right? We can't hold kids accountable for something that they have no control over. Their wifi doesn't work. Teachers, the wifi doesn't work. We will all, it's going to be okay. Grace and mercy, we're going to do this, it's going to be great, we're going to be okay." And that's how I think we've all rolled it out to our teachers with, "It's going to be okay. We're going to do this and we're going to do it well, because we have in the past and we're going to keep going." So, grace and mercy, that's what that slide is about. And you hear us say grace and mercy a lot. One teacher said, "I already know you're going to say grace and mercy." I am, you're right. WebEx, WebEx we've used for about three years now and that's our audio/video conferencing system. If you don't know, I was a technology integration specialist before I became the middle school professional development coach, so I've been a little bit in both. And so, we've been using this one for about three years. So, we have probably the best tech department around. I work really, we all work really well with the technology department, but they work really well with us too. We are a team, tech and PD are a team. And it's been really good, because when I call up one of them and say, "Hey, on WebEx, we have an issue." "All right, Elizabeth, we'll get it figured out." And I even have one of the sales agents on WebEx on speed dial, and one time he called me, now we've called him, we're like, "Hey, we're having a problem, can we call you?" I'll just text him and if he didn't answer my text within a reasonable amount, my time, like, should be about a minute, I called him. He's like, "I am golfing right now? Is it an emergency? Yep, it's my emergency." So, yes, so he jokes, I see him out in other places and he still jokes about, "I'm golfing, you can wait." But, "No, I can never wait." So, WebEx we've used, we have a great relationship with WebEx, the people that work at WebEx, the tech department, PD, we do a really great job with all of us together. K-12, we have safety parameters already in place. As you can imagine, WebEx has gotten better and bigger and we have also, so, there's a lot of safety pieces that we have to make sure we have in place for our kids and for our students. So, those are ongoing and those are things that we see, sometimes they don't always like to tell us when they update things and then we get to figure them out, we find them out on our own, and they're like, "Oh, I guess we can do that." So, we are always looking at those and making sure our kids are safe. Elementary is using their, WebEx has something called personal rooms, that's, they're using personal rooms and that works really well with them and they're able to keep those kiddos safe. The middle school and high school, we're using Canvas as an LTI tool that goes within Canvas and then students are able to get on the Canvas, get on their calendar, click their link, and they're able to join their WebEx session from there. So, we've made it work for the age levels that we have. Can you go to that next slide for me, Cindy, real quick? There's our flow chart for our synchronous learning day. If a student has issues, they call the tech office, let the classroom teacher know, and if they can get back in, they will. If they can't, no big deal, this is interactive, they're going to be given what?
Grace and mercy.
Good job, Ms. Brown. If a teacher has issues, he gets points, they're going to contact their building administrators first, so their building administrators know there's probably something going on, then they're going to call the tech office. If the tech office can't help it if they don't have wifi at their home, it's nothing weak, HCCSC tech department is great, but they're not that great, they can't fix individual wifi issues. So, they will do their best and if we can't, we can't, we're going to give the teacher what? Grace and mercy. They're going to contact their students via email or whatever way that they normally talk to their students, and then that's when the PD team comes into place, will help them make sure those students get that learning for that day. There's a lot of times we have pitched it and we can put asynchronous up there for them ready to roll. So, our kids will still get what they need for that day, they'll still get their instructional practices, it'll just be grace and mercy and we will do our best and we'll make sure we get that taken care of. Now, you can go back for me, Cindy. Updated documents, we're getting those all updated, translated, and those will be up on our district website soon. Then, meetings with community stakeholders, we have met with the Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, and Huntington Library. Boys and Girls Club, we are training their employees this week and that's just to help them, how to keep, support them with this. I will, they have over 200-something kids on a day. For them to run a virtual day, synchronous day, for over 200 students is going to be a lot on their wifi system. I said, "Don't worry, we'll give you grace and mercy." So, we are, we, it's a lot for them. And I can't thank them more than enough that, what a great community and how they work really well with Huntington Schools and how they support our kiddos. They are really great, it's great. YMCA is helping us this year a little bit more with that virtual piece and then the Huntington County Library, we're making sure if they need any support, we can do that as well. And we'll continue to reach out to those people. And then we're just going to continue to practice. Like we said, we've got four days still before we even have to worry about it. I'm thinking like on the second e-learning day, we'll start to get a little, "All right, here we go again, we got to make sure we're ready to roll." So, middle school practice, I had my teachers practice with each other. One of them got to be the naughty kid, that was always fun, and pushed all the buttons and they had to figure out each other and then they practiced with their students the next day, so, it was kind of fun, so. Questions about this, the whole synchronous, asynchronous?
So, when you're applying the grace and mercy on the circle of death, so, will you have something downloaded already in their computer that if you can't get it? Or how will, how will you give them something to do unless they already have it?
In elementary, I know they're going to do a little, they have their red e-learning folders and I think they're going to put some stuff in there just in case. Middle school and high school, if a student can't get on because it's wifi, we have told teachers they do not have to assign assignments that day and we do not expect them to take grades on that day, just for the fact that I can't have Gary get an F just because you can get on and Gary gets a zero because he doesn't have wifi. That's not, that's not, people are equitable, right? So, that piece right there, yes. And then if they have an asynchronous lesson, a Canvas lesson already ready to go, but again, we have just told our teachers, you know, we're just going to make sure we do what's best for all kids.
And how will the attendance be treated?
Middle school, normal, like...
If you're not, if you're not in my picture the whole time, then you're tardy?
No, sir. So, let's say you try to get on and you can't. Mom has called the school and said, "My child's trying to get on, but they can't get on, they can't get on." So, you missed like the first two class sessions. You get on that third session. Oh, yay, he's here, right? Middle school, you go through Canvas and you'll get on and go through the Canvas course, just like they always do for e-learning. So, for e-learning and for asynchronous and synchronous, middle school is the same. High school is doing period attendance and then elementary is seeing those little faces on the screen, so.
Are you able to do this on your phone?
Yes, you can.
You can, okay. Because that could take the wifi component out a little bit.
So, I'm glad you said that. So, at the middle school and high school level, I know we are telling our teachers and our students, wifi, it'll drain if you have the audio and video on. So, if you would turn the video off and we can just hear our students, then that will help with that piece of it, so then we can at least think, we can at least get in the instructional pieces, they can still hear us. You may not be able to see our kids, but then they'll still be able to be a part of the classroom.
So, what is, this is a larger question, you may not have the answer to, but I know at one point we had an idea of what that was. What is the percentage of students that have what I would consider acceptable internet at home to be able to do this?
Right, so when they register for the school year, when they register, they fill out that, "Yes, we have wifi," and "No, we do not." I'm not sure what that update is for this school year, I'll be honest with you, but the problem is, not, not problem, but just because mom and dad said they had wifi, but they're really going to grandma and grandpa's that day.
Yeah.
So, we don't know. We don't know, grandma, grandpa may not have wifi. Grandma, grandpa, they do something on their phone, but they don't know how to get it to their kid's computer. So, even though we have those figures for when they registered, I don't know if they're truly accurate for asynchronous learning.
Or if it's good enough to be able to do WebEx too.
Right.
So, I would love when, or if we have one, just out of curiosity, what our numbers are.
Sure.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah. Sure.
We'll have, when we get to that point, we'll, we'll report back. Mr. Peters and I will talk about what went well, what the percentages of attendance were, what was it like? Did we have problems during the day? And what the success was, because this will be a continuous improvement model all over the state. And I'll continue to say, the work that these four have done, and Mr. Peters is not here, but I would tell him as well, is, it's in the top, Mr. Trout knows, he used to do some of these things nationwide, statewide, but it's in the top 1% of the plan that I've seen. They're very talented ladies and they've done a tremendous job.
The only reason is at some point, I think we need to report back to the legislature, as being the legislative liaison.
No question.
I think we need to report back to them, because this was the one piece out of last year's legislative that really had no, no discussion, nothing, it was kind of thrown in at the last minute. So, I think we need to have data that we can then report back to the legislature saying, "Hey, love the idea, but these are some challenges, especially because they also know the high-speed internet issues throughout the state." So, they should be able to understand, especially a county-wide school like we are, we should be able to report back, "Hey, this is, these are our issues. We're trying to meet what you've asked, we've got a great plan, but we still ran into issues, so I want to make sure that we have some data."
Certainly, great point.
But thank you, ladies, all, thank you.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
When you did the test with teachers doing it, I know we're looking at a device refresh, were we using these or were we using, you know, if a teacher has a MacBook or something, like are these an issue right now with?
For the students, so, the students were using their Dells, the teachers were using their Dells as well.
Okay.
So, this plan is for 22, 23 school year, so next year we'll be, we'll adjust for when we do the refresh to make sure that our plan coincides with the device as well. But for this year, I had all my teachers, and I know Mrs. Brown did the same, log any issues that the students had with the Dells during that practice day. And I think we had eight at Crestview and maybe nine at Riverview, I looked at that data before I came, and it was more like camera would come on, mute wouldn't go off. They couldn't log in, something was, whatever. So, the tech department has that data and they're going to be pulling those devices to make sure those get fixed.
Okay.
And we'll continue to do that while we practice and then, so anybody has an issue with their device, those will be fixed before we have that synchronous learning day.
Yeah, I will say, I want to reiterate what Chuck said, thank you, ladies, this is, this is incredible. We got guidelines from the state of Indiana, it came out the week before Christmas break. Happy to report that we're well, easily within the bounds of what the state's asking us to put together. I will tell you, many of our colleagues across the state are not. Like with anything else we do, we're trying to, you know, inspect what we expect and they, and I think you can tell by the level of questions you're asking, the level of detail that these four have put together is just absolutely outstanding. And so, to the four of you, I say, "Thank you." I'm very pleased with where we sit at this point in time, but a reminder to you, the next day we miss at school is a, is a May 25 makeup day, okay? That would be the last day of school. Then the next three are the old, Lynn said, the old-fashioned e-learning days. Wow, that's old-fashioned already, but those are the next three. And then the, from day, you know, those days five on for this school year, hopefully we're not there ever, but this is where we are at. As a board, we will have lively discussions coming up about school calendar in the future, okay? And I, but I felt it was important before we walked into the winter season fully, that you have a much deeper understanding of what our plans are and what we're prepared to do. But again, thank you, ladies, this was outstanding, I'm very proud of you and your work, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Are they on the board?
Well, yeah, you all know a lot, maybe I should get your picture someday and we'll put you up on the board too with everybody else, there you go, so.
After the first day that we have to use it, they'll come in and get on it.
Yes, that's right. And you know what, they said that, but kudos to the tech department, who have worked tirelessly in making sure this will operate. And so, to Mike and Sumter and his team and Garrett's back there, thank you to all of you who, who have done a great job of trying to cross as many Ts and dot as many Is as they possibly can before we enter into this, so thank you.
You don't have to stay either if you don't want to.
Grace and mercy.
Grace and mercy.
Yeah.
Okay, now we are on to the consent agenda, items G1 through 13.
Yes, I'm going to recognize and pull out this evening and again, thank our community for their continued support of our school district when we look at 12 with accept, requested step donations. Today's board meeting, our community has donated $66,119.35 towards our kids and staff, which is incredible. And Mrs. Kraft, who has been patiently sitting back there, as you'll see in number three in your board packet, I will read that out loud for those who are watching. Roanoke Elementary School is requesting permission to accept a donation in the amount of $60,000 from the Paul and June Everett Foundation grant to be used to build a pavilion in the playground area. So, Jamie, you want to talk to us a little bit about this grant and what your plans are?
Absolutely. I am honored to be asking for acceptance of the grant from the Paul and June Everett Foundation. This is the first year that it started. Paul and June Everett were both educators at Roanoke Elementary, did not have kids of their own, but took care and helped a lot of kids from their classrooms. And they set up a situation where they are now able to give back to the community and they are looking at building the social, emotional, physical well-being of students and the elderly in Roanoke and the surrounding county. And so, I applied for the grant for us to have an outdoor pavilion in our large playground area. We found it, in the hot summer days, there is zero shade, there's about a, there's a small area of shade, but only so many kids can fit under that when it, when it's super hot out. So, we wanted the opportunity to have a spot where kids could continue to be outside during the recess time and then also expand the classroom, so that we could do outdoor classroom activities as well. So, we're looking at building a 25 by 45-foot pavilion. The, the posts of the pavilion will match the brick of our building, so that we can maintain that look that we were going for when Roanoke was initially built. So, we are super excited to have that. Jacob Brutusel is the one that we've partnered with for the construction of that. So, the foundation has agreed to support the $60,000 to get us started and then they also were committed to finish up the cost of that, which will be about $33,000 once it's finished, hopefully summer. So, we'll plan to set up a meeting after final approval and we'll get started on the process.
That's, it's incredible, so thank you, Jamie. I want you to spend a couple of minutes just sharing the details with it, but that's pretty, that's incredible.
Good job, Jamie.
Thank you very much. The rest of the donations are there for us, but I'll highlight them. For the public, Flint Springs is requesting permission for two donations, $600 from Donors Shoes was awarded to Mrs. Davis for the purchase of books and board games for her classroom, the second in the amount of $526 from CAF Industries, for $336 was awarded to Mrs. Pressler for Weather Project, and $190 was awarded to Mrs. Davis for Animal Abductions Project. Lincoln Elementary School is requesting permission to accept a donation, clothing valued at $164.35 from Tri-Cappa to be used in their clinic. Roanoke, we mentioned. Salomon Elementary School is requesting permission to accept two donations, the first one, the amount of $100 from the Collins Brothers Automotive to be used for robotics club. Hang on, because robotics is hot and heavy across the district right now along the way. And also, the second is the amount of $464 from CAF Industries awarded to first-grade teachers Leah Long, Lisa Russell, and Marie DeWis for connecting first-grade literacy to agriculture. Crestview Middle School is requesting permission to accept a donation, the amount of $283 from CAF Industries to be, to Sarin Strands France to purchase supplies for growing vegetables indoors. The next one is, Roanoke, excuse me, Riverview Middle School is requesting permission to accept donation in the amount of $1,226 from CAF Industries for classroom mini-applications. $511 was awarded to sixth-grade teachers Becky Livingston, Melissa Ross, Matt Palmer, and Jennifer Herbert for the effects of water pollution study through literacy. $215 was awarded to Patty Jacobs for an eighth- $215 was awarded to Patty Jacobs for an eighth grade corn genetics project. And $500 was awarded to sixth grade teachers, uh, Martha Wallfogle and Brandy Cross for Fine Feathered Friends Project. Okay? And the last one's here this evening is Huntington North High School is requesting permission to accept two donations. The first one, the amount of $716 from CF Industries. $336 was awarded to Mr. Park to use for There Is No Away. And $350 was awarded to Mrs. Henline to use for student ambassadors for the environment. And the second one was the amount of 200, was $2,040 from Pathfinder's Foundation to be used for Essential Skills Classroom, uh, to purchase benches and picnic tables for an outdoor learning lab. So I'm requesting your permission for all of the consent agenda items listed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trout. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion before we vote? Would anyone like to pull a particular numbered item out and vote on it separately from the rest? All right, so we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion passes 7-0. Now I'll go to H, Board of Finance Matters. I'm going to suspend the regular meeting of the board and now call to order, uh, meeting of the Board of Finance.
Mm-hmm.
And under H1, uh, we will have an election of the board of officers of the Board of Finance.
Make a motion that we have the Board of Finance officers be the same as our current HCCSC board, uh, officers, with Matt Roth being president of the board and Kevin Yager being vice president. I think that's all you need, correct?
Yes.
Ah, there you go. That's my motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to elect officers as presented.
Sorry, I was very wordy.
That motion passes 7-0. We will now go to H2, Review of Investments Report, Investment Policy, and Report of the Financial Conditions of the School Corporation.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, good evening. This is our annual Board of Finance meeting. And during this meeting, there are several points of business that need to occur. Uh, the first was to elect the President and Secretary of the Board of Finance. Second is to receive and review the investment report required by Indiana Code 5-13-7 and to review the district investment policy. I both the policy and the investment report have been uploaded to Board Docs, um, for your review. And last is to receive and discuss the Fiscal Indicators Report, uh, which is a more recent report over the last three years or so that is required by Indiana Code 20-19-7-4. Um, since we've already elected the officers, we'll move on to the review of the investment report. Um, our primary bank for the district is Teachers Credit Union. And as of December 31st, our balance in our checking account were $12,600,897.84. And our combined savings were $26,005. We have one small CD at BIPPA State Bank, um, that is associated with a scholarship fund. And the balance of that was $4,000. Our interest income for 2022 was $113,684.37. And all but $8.01 were from, um, TCU and that $8 was from BIPPA's for the CD.
Question related to that, and I think I know the answer to that, but I just remind me, all of that interest rolls into the operations fund now, correct?
Except for the CD.
Except for the CD. Thank you for calling that out.
Um, in addition to our corporation bank accounts, we do have two bond accounts held outside the corporation. Um, those are held by US Bank. Uh, we still have some remaining, um, dollars from the 2018 bond, which was the Roanoke School Building, the stadium, um, and the Learning Center. The balance at the end of December was $421,368.48. And then we have the new 2022 bond and the balance at US Bank is $15,411,925.22. They did make a disbursement to us of $10 million, which is part of the 26 million that we're holding at Teachers Credit Union.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the current rate of interest at Teachers Credit Union is .42%. Um, and as I mentioned before, the district investment policy is attached. It's policy 6144. It was last, um, revised in March of 2020 and, um, it's been reviewed and no changes are recommended at this time. Any questions on any of that before we move on?
I know banks are slowly inching up their interest rates, but the federal government's up there several times. That still seems kind of low. Is that where, is that still a good rate? I don't know.
That, well, I'm not sure if it's a good rate. That is our rate.
Okay.
Um, they, they will review that in September. That is when our next, um, review is.
That's good.
Yeah, Becky, do you want to, Becky Smith is here. Did you, I see your head nodding up and down. Do you want to make a comment on, on that, Becky? You can come up to the mic, you can come up to the mic here so the community can hear you. So.
Yeah, the .42, I think you had a three-year contract with TCU. And, um, that will be renewed in September and they'll give us another, um, update or, um, quote for those rates. And, and usually they do anywhere from a two to three to a five-year with TCU. Uh, my previous district, we had five years. So, um, the projection is that they're going to go up significantly by this fall. So the timing is pretty good for HCCSC.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Becky.
Okay, and next is the Fiscal Indicators Report. So this is, it's, um, actually a link to the DOAB board, um, which is the Distressed Unit Appeals Board. There's a link, um, that's, you can access it, anyone can access it. You can look at any school district. Cindy has ours pulled up. You can look at any of the surrounding districts. Tells you our last audit information, our last ADM. And if you scroll down, there's, uh, six different indicators that they have listed. Um, the first one is our ADM. It shows the history of the ADM and notes our enrollment has decreased, as we know, over the last several years. Um, there's some dropdowns. You can pick a certain, our spring or fall count. Um, and you can dive down into a little more information, um, there where it says time of year, virtual. So once you click on those, you can just keep diving into additional information. Um, the next one is our fund balances. Um, our fund balances have increased over the last several years. Um, some of that can be attributed to our ESTR grants that we received, um, over the last few years. And again, you can do a dropdown and select a specific fund and get into more detail depending on what, what you're looking for. Number three is our annual deficit and surplus. It's an indicator, um, graph that shows the district's fund balances. And you can see that those have been increasing year to year. The gold bar shows a surplus and the gray horizontal line, um, has been increasing over the last, um, been increasing each year. And the same goes. You can do a dropdown and select a specific fund. Number four is the fund balances as percentage of operations expenditures. Um, this is positive in our case. It's showing an increase. Number five is revenue by type. Um, it's been consistently increasing. Um, and now it shows an increase due to ESTR grant funds. Um, and those, we just finished ESTR 1. ESTR 2 will end in 2023 and ESTR 3 will end in 2024. And the last one is the operating referendum revenue as percent of total revenue. And this is flatlined because we do not have a rough operating referendum. Any questions on that portion?
Questions for Adet or Becky about any of the information that you have in front of you this evening? When we are going through, uh, strategic planning, which is going to start up here in the next few weeks, which you're, uh, reviewing at this point in time, please know that, for example, under number three, number one, the average daily membership, we will be, uh, uh, looking at that longitudinally. From standpoint is, is that you mentioned to me a little meeting or two ago about a demographic study. Well, that would be part of our strategic planning is what is our enrollment trends going to look like long-term? You know that we're working on a 10-year fiscal comprehensive plan. Uh, that will also be embedded into part of this. Um, when we do the strategic planning, we're going to be, start talking, uh, about fund balances and percentages, about what you expect to see. Okay? What you want to have. All right? And so that will be a driver in many of our conversations into the future. Um, Mrs. Smith and I have done this, uh, previously together. Becky, anything that you want to talk about with anything else that maybe we haven't mentioned here this evening that, that we need to touch on? I, I think that we've done, but by, by law, that we have to do this each year in this format. Okay? Um, but as you as a board, when we start working here in our strategic planning process in February, you will be intimately involved with many of these funds and many of these issues about what your expectations are and what you want to see as we set goals, uh, into the future. Okay? And so, um, that will also, hopefully a year from now, be part of this, uh, presentation when we make that again. Okay? So Adet, thank you. That was incredibly informational. Becky, I thank you for your input also. So thank you.
All right, move on to H3. Um, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting of the Board of Finance and reopen the regular board meeting.
Need a motion to adjourn that.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Please.
So moved.
Second, all those, do you want to, could we do a voice vote? Is that okay?
Sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to, I'll reopen the regular meeting and move on to I1, Request Permission to Award Contract for Cafeteria Remodel Equipment.
Board, I have Ken here tonight. He's done tremendous job, uh, as we went through multiple bids and making recommendation for our equipment for Huntington North Cafeteria renovation. So Ken, they're yours.
I have, on December 20th, we sent out a second RFP and we were very pleased that we got four results back. Uh, all four companies were rated very well by our, um, by people we talked to. The company that we ended up take, going with or recommending that you go with is Lancaster Shirk. I personally have talked to all three of the food service directors that they had remodels done in their cafeterias and in their schools. And all three of the food service directors were extremely pleased with this company. So it's, it's our privilege to present to you and ask for your acceptance to accept the bid from, um, Lancaster Shirk Company for the kitchen line equipment and remodel at the Huntington North High School.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the request to accept the bids or bid?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for the new food service equipment at HNHS.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion?
Could be a cooking machine.
That's in the comments. Isn't that in the comments?
Absolutely.
I know we got this not started when we were hoping to get it going. We had to re-bid here. Still see getting that done.
Our goals are still the same.
Okay.
There's, there's things that we don't have control of.
I understand that. But the cause we're completely redoing that entire kitchen area, do, have we thought about Plan Bs in case maybe the first couple of days of school, we have to do that? Have you, I'm assuming you're?
That they are in discussion.
All right, that's all I want to get. I don't expect an answer. I just want a discussion. That's important. Thank you, sir.
We're thinking about it.
And for the board's purposes, good question. Uh, we meet this week with Veridian as well and Ken. And we go through, um, the completed drawings of, okay, if we do this based on the supply chain that they're aware of, what's the earliest we can start? When do we anticipate being able to start? And then based on those two factors, when would completion be? And so we'll be educated on that process around Thursday. But, uh, Veridian is hopeful that we can start, Pat and Ken, uh, have already had discussions or if we start early at the end of the school year, what that looks like for cafeteria for the kids for lunch in the commons. And also if it goes into the fall, what that might look like as we have to temporarily house. Uh, and for the board's knowledge, anytime you do something this large, at one end of this, you're going to have kids in the commons and, and different areas eating. Uh, Principal McLaughlin and Ken have done a wonderful job of working through that and working with Rich Hurdle as well. So we'll come back to you. You'll hear on one of my board updates, uh, what that Thursday discussion looked like and what we're hopeful for.
Not associated with this, but since he brought up the commons, are, is that closer to being completed?
It's very close to being completed.
But you're, are you using, are you starting to use what you have?
We will probably using it within a couple of weeks.
Cool. That's great.
Not totally, but we will.
Little increments. That's all we do.
Yep.
And, uh, for the board's purposes, Ken won't say it, but I will. His, uh, very diligent process on this and his, um, checking and how to do business and making sure we get the best has saved us money on this process, on the re-bid. So outstanding job, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did we vote?
Not yet. We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. That's our discussion. So go ahead and vote on the motion to approve.
Good job, Vice. Keep going on.
I, I thought we hadn't finished. Motion passes 7-0. And I happened to wander the halls during the holiday basketball tournament and the new commons equipment looks really nice.
And it looked nice.
Yeah.
Well done.
It's all up and running.
Got to go up there and do that.
Yeah.
I'll find the time.
Yeah.
That's good.
Um, now we'll move to J1, Items of Discussion by Board Members. Welcome, Carrie.
As I say, made it through your first one.
And my greege will continue to come up with E1 and everything.
Uh, I know that it's, uh, been mentioned already, but, um, in the donations phase, uh, we're always recognizing the people that, in the companies and that's showing interest in our, donating to our schools, you know, over $66,000. It is always amazing to me how the effort that our, our teachers and our administrators and, uh, they go to to make sure our kids have the best that they can have. Um, that commitment is second to none as far as I'm concerned. And we talk about it a lot, but I think it's interesting, important to continue to bring that up. Um, it's not, it doesn't just fall in our lap. It's a lot of work that goes into that and, um, it's just a lot of money, you know? It's good stuff.
Got a lot of caring businesses by solid CFP in there, I think, a couple of times. That's, uh,
Pathfinders.
Pathfinder's Foundation, both great organizations in our community, uh, providing for our students as well. So that's, that's good.
All right, hearing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. We were just poking through. Is every student supposed to be on?
Southwest.
Southwest Allen County. I looked all over the site, typed it in, because I wanted to see what an operations referendum report looked like, because they've had one forever, but.
I don't supply them with anything, they get all that information from our state.
I hope you have wax on there. You've got, I wonder if we talk about it when you start doing your.
I would say most of that comes from our state reporting.
That's a great thing to go through.
Maybe they're in a special section.
What was it you were looking for?
Southwest Allen County Schools, Homestead. So they listed on school corps, and you can even search by.